I'm sorry, my things are everywhere right now. Just like my brain.
Fifteen seconds. All right, hot mic. Five. Can you hit record?
Show at six thirty now.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December sixteenth Select Board. We'll start off with the Pledge of Leavings. Do we have any minutes?
Oh, gosh.
Or do I just want to wait till next time?
We, you, let's just wait till next time.
Hmm?
You want to wait till next time?
We can wait till next time, yeah. Additions to the agenda with the consent of the Board Chair. So previously, the Belchertown Branding Committee has been, we've talked about it a couple of times now. It was supposed to be on tonight's agenda, but due unforeseen circumstances, it was inadvertently left off the agenda tonight. So we're going to add that at the end of, after we appoint the Deputy Task Collector. Okay, so we've got a couple of appointments tonight. Steve, you want to introduce folks?
Sure, thank you. As you're aware, we've been working on trying to fill two positions, three actually. Grant Manager was one that is not on the agenda tonight, but we are working on filling that. But we have a Communications Manager and a BCTV General Manager. These are both new positions. Previous to having a BCTV General Manager, we just had an Operations Manager, so a little bit of a change there. And coincidentally, they both started today, which worked out well because we have a meeting tonight. We had a small staff meeting this morning. I think there's a lot of energy and enthusiasm to hit the ground running. And I think we're going to have a great team here assembled. So without further ado, we have two people in the room tonight. We have Kate Nedu. She's our new Communications Manager. Some of you may know her from her volunteer work in town. And we also have Esther Glavacki. She's here. She's the BCTV General Manager. So we'll let Kate go first, and then Esther can jump in.
Sounds good. Come on up, Kate.
Come on up.
Hi.
Hi, Kate.
How are you?
Fantastic. How about yourself?
I'm good, thank you.
So what did they tell you the job was about?
Uh, what did they tell me the job was about? They told me the job was about essentially wrangling in the communications for the town, developing and streamlining structures that will allow us to effectively communicate with the various individuals that live, work, and come to town, whether it's for business or pleasure. Putting Belchertown first in regards to how people think about the town, creating a positive outlook on it. You know, getting out the word about what's happening in town through all different sorts of communication channels. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Sweet. The, I kind of envision it as like you have all these different departments doing all their different things, right? And it's a centralized place for residents, whoever, right, to go and just kind of see what, see what the different departments want communicated.
Yes. But it's also helping the various departments engage in communicating, ensuring that it's a two-way street. Not just people looking for information, but ensuring that departments are putting out information that people are looking for.
Perfect. Any questions from the Board or statements?
So happy you're here.
I'm so happy to be here.
Steve, anything you want to add about that role?
No, I think she did a good job explaining it. These are new positions, so, you know, some of this is undefined. We're going to adapt as we find needs. Kate has already been helping us today with a few things in the office, trying to get us involved with some different technologies. And there's a whole list of software that both positions are looking to have implemented here in town. So, you know, our IT Director's been engaged with them today. They both had tours today too. Our HR Director brought them around and did some introductions. So again, I think there's a lot of energy and, you know, it's starting with me. I think this is a great thing that we have here in town now.
Awesome. All right, any questions for us while you have us tonight?
No, I don't think so.
Just making it easy, Kate. Sweet. Communication. Good.
One thing that we will be doing is, my understanding is Kate has received multiple requests for assistance with different endeavors. So we're going to sit down and prioritize those. So that's going to be our first order of business. So.
Very good.
That was sort of my question. Like how if, do we just email directly to Kate? Do we email CCU? Like how do folks, if they want?
So Joanne was planning on sending out an email to introduce myself and Esther to the town. I was going to follow that up with an email to everybody, kind of letting people know a little bit more about myself, the fact that it is a part-time position, how to find me, how to get ahold of me and stuff like that. And then coming up with tools in order for people to submit questions or queries or something like that. So that way I can streamline all the different things that people are looking for help with, get a better understanding. Because part of the communication issues also stem from people not understanding technology. So part of that is, you know, is it something that communications necessarily handles? Or should department heads be setting up training better on how to do these things? Or, you know, is it a question that IT would be able to better to address? But until I have a place to collect all those questions and everything, can't really disseminate that information.
Nice. All right. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Steve, how about introducing Esther?
Our BCTV General Manager, Esther Glavacki. She has a very impressive resume, not only in her accomplishments, but just in the way she put it together. Personally, if I ever need to look for a job, I'm probably going to call her and have her help me with mine. I was so impressed with it. And again, we had a staff meeting today, and I think the enthusiasm and excitement on her part is there. So I think we're going to have a great department moving forward. I think, you know, she's going to pick up where Lou left off and build upon the success of BCTV that's been here for thirty years, Lou?
Twenty-seven, but close.
Twenty-seven. Yep, yep. So I'll get it right sooner or later.
Close enough.
But close enough. So I think that's, you know, the best segue I can, I can give you for now, and I'll let you take it over, so.
Yeah, I'm excited to be here. Excited to post-pandemic help with this merging the meeting with the broadcast more seamlessly. And hopefully take some burn off Kevin too with that. But yeah, I'm excited. I'm getting to know our volunteers first and just seeing how things are and.
Sweet. Any questions for Esther?
I'm just so excited. I'm just going to keep saying that. You know, I think that, you know, Lou has done a tremendous job these last twenty-seven years. And I'm just looking forward to having some new eyes and see where we can go, so.
Awesome. Well, welcome aboard to U2. Can't wait for your first progress report in sixty days. Any questions for us?
Not to start on a negative note, but just is there like, what's the biggest headache or biggest complaint you have coming in that could work on?
This.
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 Do you want to elaborate?
Timing. Like, just the meeting setup in all of our locations. And the accessibility for committees to just get on seamlessly. And it's been a struggle. It's been a huge challenge for committee members. Like, you know, they get a go, they get a log on. They don't quite understand how the whole system works. There's instructions to follow. But unless there's somebody there like facilitating it, it's just, it's been a huge struggle. We've made some improvements. This, this piece of equipment has, I think, helped tremendously so that people at home are watching and they don't feel like they can't hear. It sounds like a bunch of potatoes talking up here and they can't see anybody and. Yeah, I mean, the technology has changed, so.
Very quickly.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And I'm hopeful, I was going to say, I'm hopeful that your work shared with the Communications Manager's work too, maybe will have more engagement because we're not a small, small town and we just don't have the amount of people watching and listening that we'd like.
Very good. All right. Well, thanks for coming in tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you both. We're so excited.
Yeah, thank you both for being here.
All right, discussion action, action item five A, ARPA adjustments.
Okay, so everybody should have a eleven by seventeen Excel sheet, which will be the basis of our conversation. I'm going to be asking for two things tonight. The first is to make some minor adjustments, some additional adjustments. This has been kind of a ongoing process as we come to the close of the year. And the second thing I'm going to ask is that we.
Can we get the first one out of the way first?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that. So if you look at the Excel sheet, there's three items highlighted in yellow. So the good news here tonight, it's all good news, is that the estimate from the electrician for the work on the elevator came in lower than expected, so we have twelve thousand five hundred dollars there to recommit. The final invoice for the engineering support on the pickleball court parking lot came in. And their level of effort was less than anticipated, so we have a savings of eleven thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-five cents there to reallocate. And the final quote for the highway garage ventilation, which we added money to at the last meeting, came in. And it was actually a hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents less than what we had anticipated, so another small adjustment. So that's all good news. The remaining items on this list, everything that we anticipated, being under contract or obligated, is on track, if not already obligated. Linda has not ordered the additional light yet for the town hall parking lot. She has a quote ready to sign, but that's a topic that I want to bring up tonight. We've been working with our Economic Development Coordinator, our Creative Economy Coordinator, and all of her numbers are working out. We have a couple of small contracts left to sign there, which she's on track to do, and we'll be in good shape with that. So I'm feeling really good about this, but we do have those three items I want to reallocate tonight. So in the bottom in green, there's a little bit of a menu there. I do have two recommendations on which items we should, we should fund. So unless there's questions, I'll get right to that.
Steve, I know, I have one. I know you can't really talk about hiring and personnel issues. However, are we still feeling confident that that final position, the funding?
Yeah, we have been in conversations with an individual, and my understanding is she accepted the position. So we just need to do the onboarding. So I would anticipate, hopefully by the end of this week, having an individual start, so it's established. Yeah, that's the Grant Manager.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, let's head to green.
Yep, I see.
She's the bad.
Smart.
Her bad habit is on it. It's a bad thing over there.
So of those items, my absolute number one priority is the removal of the communications tower, seven thousand two hundred dollars. So I have two different.
Anybody disagree?
I'll take it down.
So I have two different scenarios to spend the rest of the money down. The first one would be to add in the door at the senior center. That's a, excuse me, Freedom Center. That's a main entry door for seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty cents. And fund the fire department garage door openers at ninety-two hundred dollars. Second scenario would be to fund the tower. Add a additional light in the town hall parking lot for three thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. So at the last meeting, we authorized one additional light. This would bring us up to two additional lights. And the fire department door openers at ninety-two hundred dollars. And put the balance towards the polling pads for the town clerk. The request that she has sent us was seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's four pads. So whatever money that we can give her, she can just order one, two, or three. If we were to pursue this schedule, it would fully fund two and partially fund a third, which we'd be able to take out of her budget, and then we'd find the money for the fourth one later. So those are two different scenarios that I looked at. We need to keep in mind that any purchases have to be less than ten thousand dollars, otherwise we have to do a quote process, which would take a couple of weeks, and we don't have that time. So these are, that's why these are all small items. And then additional to that, we can only do one door at the Freedom Center. Because if we do two doors in the same building, we would have to put both quotes together. Otherwise, it's bid splitting, and that's not permissible. So that's why I chose those two scenarios. So the first scenario, both scenarios include tower removal. The first one is the Freedom Center door and the fire department garage door openers. The second one is the, includes the second light in town hall, the door openers, and the polling pads, so.
So you're saying the Freedom Center door and the kitchen door, Freedom Center, can't do both of them?
We can't do them both at the same time. Right, right. We can do two doors in different buildings, but not in the same building, without, without it being bid splitting.
Can you remind me, what did you say a little bit earlier before we got to the green about Linda and lights?
So last meeting, we authorized the purchase of one additional light.
Yep. Oh, this is a second light?
This would be a second additional light. Yep. So that's why she hasn't placed that order. So she will as soon as we decide tonight.
We're talking about out here.
Correct.
And it's dark.
Yeah, the lower parking lot's a little, yeah, yeah.
So second light would be for the lower parking lot?
Yeah, both of them would be.
Oh, not for this parking lot, for back there.
Right, the lower, lower side. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, for discussion.
So wait, so scenario one is twenty-four. So I got that. What was the second one?
It's the tower removal, the second light in town hall, the garage door openers at the fire station, and the polling pads.
So what, does sixty-one, seventy-two, those two doors, they're not, you're not including them?
No, I didn't put those on. Those are the side doors that go in and out of the kitchen area. And they're infrequently used, so I didn't think they were a priority at this point.
And the Freedom Center door is an exterior door?
That is, yeah, a frequently used door.
What's the state of the door right now?
It's pretty rough. They're original to the buildings. So if you've been to the Recreation Department, you'll see that they, there's some new doors. They're, they're like a more modern style. They're, you know, black aluminum with glass in them, better door handles, better panic bars, kind of like what we have here at Town Hall. And then there's other doors that are solid steel, and they're just not working properly. So these are items that were on the capital list. For the most part, all the doors eventually are going to need to be replaced that haven't already in those buildings. So we've been trying to bulk away them one at a time, two at a time when the money's available. So this gets us, it just advances the, the progress that we've made.
All right, any comments? Anybody want to adjust Steve's proposals? Anybody see anything that is a higher priority?
Why don't you have one more question? So the exterior door, like is that running our electric bill up or our heating bill? Like if we address a door, are we going to save somewhere else too?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some savings because these are more efficient than the old-style doors. They're not weather's tight.
So the only exterior door is the Freedom Center door?
But at the moment, the Freedom Center is not being heavily utilized, is it?
Well, more and more. Yeah, yeah. That's where a second-hand store is for the seniors. Veterans Agent is in there.
Is that the one we're talking about though? Are we talking about the?
This is the one facing, yes. It faces the.
Oh, the old Legion. Yeah, right.
And then are the fire station garage doors working?
They're currently working, but they've been giving us trouble.
May for me tower removal and fire station garage doors, but I'm also, also Freedom Center door. If we can, if we can cut down a bill on, you know, our, our utility bills, I think that's important too.
And anything to approve space to get it used more and more and more is always a good thing too.
Yeah, we've been working on that, trying to program the space better. And yeah, there'll be more use in that area, so, without a doubt.
Was that one of the proposals again? I'm sorry, was tower removal, Freedom Center door, and fire station garage door, was that?
Yep, that's.
That's, that's one of the proposals?
Mm-hmm. And that brings us within, you know.
Couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, which, which is the second part of my request, which we'll get to in a minute.
Any other thoughts?
So do we get any like bulk discount for buying four doors at the same time?
For the.
For different doors? No, I mean, sorry, 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 sorry.
Garage door opener.
Yes, thank you. Because it says four at twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, I mean, we could do two now and two later, you know, if you really wanted. That's why I put that information in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, if you wanted to look at something different, spread it out.
Because then if we did like two of those and like two polling pads that way, or is it like, is there like a pick-me-up for her to get four? Like does she need four? Like it would two be insufficient, and she wouldn't be able to use two.
Well, eventually she will need all four. But I think we can find other funding sources. There's a reserve fund, there's, yeah.
And what are the polling pads?
They're for the help of their registration and, and for early voting.
Oh, with a pad, yeah, oh.
Yeah, yeah. Process early ballots faster. On Election Day, they'll be able to check two people in at a time, each precinct instead of one, so the lines move faster.
I mean, if we do tower removal, Freedom Center door, and garage door openers, that leaves us with two dollars left.
Right.
Yeah, two dollars.
I think that's like perfect.
Yeah, let's do it.
Both of these work out, because with the polling pads, I would just put the balance to it. So, but.
That sounds like consensus is around number one.
Okay.
Do you have any? Are we talking about moving? Reallocate ARPA funding, seventy-two hundred dollars for tower removals, seventy-seven fifty-six and forty cents for Freedom Center door, and ninety-two hundred dollars for four fire station garage door openers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Okay, the next part of that conversation for ARPA, so we are on the last two weeks. I can anticipate a couple hundred bucks here, maybe a couple hundred bucks there. So I'm requesting that the Board authorize me to make last-minute adjustments, or we can, if necessary, just have a special meeting to address that. But we can set some parameters on it, you know, maybe, obviously no items over ten thousand dollars, because there's no way we can contract. But maybe transfers of less than five thousand dollars from any other account. And I think that would get us through if there's any last-minute changes.
I mean, from the remaining ARPA accounts.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I won't be here, so I can't, I mean, you guys can have a special meeting.
You can always have a special meeting.
Wait a minute, they're all special.
So anything under ten thousand?
For purchase.
Okay.
Yeah, any reductions in existing obligations would be five thousand or under. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, just for conversation.
Yeah, to keep things moving.
If there were leftover money somewhere, it would be about funding what's in the green.
Yes.
Over.
Well, it depends on the amount. I mean, if it's five hundred dollars, you know, I might have to just spend it on pencils. Pencils. I, I don't know.
But it's not about transferring monies from one of these line items to another. It's about opening capital?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Right, now I'm kind of up.
Okay, can we get a motion?
I move that any remaining ARPA funds left over from any encumbered, voted upon previously monies that are available, we authorize Steve Williams, Town Manager, to spend as necessary, as long as it's under five thousand dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that closes the ARPA discussion.
It's a very big chapter in.
Yeah, no kidding.
Very big.
Thank you for all the support on this over the last few weeks. I know it's been a fire drill for everybody, so.
All right, so five B, social media policy revisions. Steve, you want to take that one?
Sure. So in your packet, there's a redlined version of the social media policy. We've only had a social media policy for about a year now. And we knew going into it that there was going to be questions and things that needed to be answered, and maybe some revisions. So we tracked all those questions from various departments and employees, the Communications Committee. There was actually some changes at the legislative level. And we sent everything back to Town Council for their review and edits. After we received those, I forwarded them over to the Communications Committee. Members of the Communications Committee reviewed them, worked on some additional changes, and we went back and forth to council until we finally came to what you have in front of you. So it's been vetted thoroughly, and I think it addresses our current needs better. So I'm asking the Board tonight to approve the revised policy, which I feel is going to be appropriate.
Very good. Any questions for Steve? All right, can we get a motion to approve the new policy?
I move that we approve the new revised Belchertown social media policy.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Question. How are we going to communicate this to everyone?
Oh, once.
It's Kate's job.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to assign it to our new Communications Director. No, being that it's a policy, it'll go on my letterhead, it'll be memo for me to the, all the town departments.
And like committees and all the people's.
And committees, yeah. Right, so, yeah.
You know what, I actually did have, I forgot I had one question on this. On page ten of sixteen, is there any value in changing the certification to read, "I have read, understand, and will comply" with the Belchertown social media policy? I'm just thinking back to things that I've signed, like employee handbooks and such, and that language usually is in there.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
So you're saying you're going to add it?
We can.
Okay.
Do we need to amend? I mean.
Uh, no, we don't need to. Yeah, we can, we can amend, sure. Call you, call it a do an amendment.
We need to amend it?
Let's do it.
The, the actual amendment that I just requested?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we amend page ten of sixteen of the revised Belchertown social media policy to read, "I have read, understand, and will comply with the Belchertown social media policy."
Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. And now with the amendment now in place, all in favor of the new policy?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. Thank you. Five C, vote to renew and endorse the final liquor licenses. Five C, vote to renew and endorse the final liquor licenses.
Um, so we had two, um, that were left, we were waiting for, um, two items, um, one is a certificate of standing and the second is a fire department sign up. So we don't have either of those yet, um, however, we need to have these signed by the end of the calendar year, so what I would ask the board to do is sign them tonight, we're gonna hold them until we get to the final documentation that we need, which we expect to have, um, and then we'll release them to the, uh, to the applicants, so, because of time sensitive matter, but we will not release them until we have all of those final documents.
I move we approve the liquor licenses, renew and endorse the final liquor licenses for Mill Valley LLC and Checkers Liquor in Valley.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And we have a request from our treasurer collective to appoint the deputy tax collector, this is an annual appointment, um, her routine business, Martha Jones, um, she's, he, he was from the, um, taking care of that for many years.
Very good, can I add a motion for the deputy tax collector?
I move that we reappoint Arthur P. Jones to the position of deputy tax collector uh, for a period beginning January first, twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
No, amendment twenty five.
Uh, twenty five.
Twenty, twenty twenty, let me say that again, I move that re- reappoint Arthur P. Jones to the position of deputy tax collector for a period beginning January first, twenty twenty five through December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, um. Yeah, we'll just sign those, alright, um, here we go, the Belchertown branding committee, so, uh, I believe, Jen, you should probably talk about this.
Yeah, so Ma is also on here, um, for questions, um, so as part of Ma's responsibilities, um, we put together this branding project manager, um, to oversee the rebranding project initiative that we are embarking upon. Um, so, uh, we were in close contact with Doug, with Steve, with Jill about how to do all of these things. Um, we hired a bran- a branding project manager, um, and then we said, well, who's gonna work on these, you know, getting this feedback and how are we gonna put it together? So we formed this im- uh, informal working group, so Ma is part of it, um, but she's a paid contractor. Um, our project manager, Arts Equity Group, is a paid contractor, Doug Albertson has been part of this process, Lisa and myself have been part of this process, Chris Martin, um, from the communications committee has been part of this process, um, thus far, and we agreed that we needed, um, a couple more members, including somebody with some, um, deep roots in the town, and we don't, haven't identified that in individual yet. Um, but the other thing that came out of, um, as we were discussing the putting together of this, um, group that's gonna move forward with this project, we wanted to make sure that the public knew that this project was happening, um, and that the meetings are open to the public. Um, so to that end, we would like to be able to post meetings through the town clerk's office and post our agendas and, um, our findings and keep the public appraised of the work that the committee is doing or working group or whatever you wanna call it, it's a public body of people that are working on behalf of the town. Um, so one of the suggestions was, well, um, we should just become a committee. So what we did was, um, we put together a charge based on the work that is being done by the people that are in the meeting and what the intention of that, um, project is gonna be going forward and what we're doing, um, so that is what you have in front of you tonight. Um, and Ma is also here, if there are questions on the process that she's utilized so far, and how we came to this, um, point in the work that we've been doing.
So they ask you is to form a Belchertown branding committee, is that right?
Correct.
Right, um, um, this is all a result of, um, a couple years ago, we had an ARPA funds working group, which we thought we're on the right track, but apparently we weren't. Um, they wanted us to, uh, they want that group to, um, host its meetings in public, um, which I think the same would apply here, I'm necessarily convinced that we need to form a committee, but if that's the step the board wants to take, that's fine.
Right, I mean, I think to to your point, um, doesn't need to necessarily be a formal committee if we can get it posted, but we've been told by the town clerk that we need to post them, we need to be an appointed committee in order to post meetings, so we're trying to navigate the inner workings of Mass General Law and be on the up and up with all parties in full transparency to the public and be able to continue the work that we're paying people to do.
Correct.
To your point, um, I plan on sometime late winter inviting council to a meeting to talk about two topics, one would be open meeting law, and the second would be, um, fundraising for committees and and what is permissible, what isn't. Both of those sections of Mass General Law are very nuanced, and that's the issue, um, depending on who looks at them, you can flip flop either way, um, and that's always been an issue. It'd be best if we had somebody come in and just give us, you know, their overview of it, who, you know, is an expert in those fields. So that's something that, uh, we'll we'll talk about at a future meeting.
So this is a committee that will do fundraising?
No, no, but those are the two topics that I want to have council coming, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And come up a lot.
I have two questions, so a minute ago you said they wanted it to be public, who's they?
Sure.
What did I say?
The the working, the working group, the.
No, it was Ed, it was Ed.
Oh, the, um, oh, oh, see, they want to be public.
So we ran into say she's they and.
Oh, uh, there was a, there was an open meeting violation, uh, that we were notified about, so.
Violation. Oh, the person who filed the violation.
Right, we were notified through the open meeting people, Boston.
Right, and the, right, and furthermore, the termination from the attorney general's office was that we were in violation of open meeting law.
Okay, and then my second question is, what are the, are there rules around forming a committee in terms of opening it up to the residents to join? Or do you, can you just pick who you want to be on a committee?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Both.
It's a great question.
So there are no rules, it sounds like?
Not really.
No, we c- we can assign people to a committee.
Okay. I had a similar line of questioning, that, um, my understanding about committees is that you set, uh, the membership numbers, that you say that there are seven and therefore the quorum is five, I don't see that included here, this looks more like a working group description, does it need to be more formalized to have quorum and member representation?
Because we're being asked to form a committee tonight, it should be, a number should be established.
So on page two, um, it does say the committee will consist of five members, um, and it gives some committee membership. So there is a little bit of guidance there.
And I know I've asked this privately, but I'll ask it publicly, most of the time, select board members cannot serve on committees, but in this case, it is acceptable because this is a responsibility of a select board person, is that correct?
Well, um.
Yeah, I mean, I c- I called the state ethics, um, line today and spoke with the lawyer of the day, um, she said, you're working on behalf, in your capacity as a select board member, on behalf of the select board and the town, and it's in line with the duties and my role as a select board effect, elected official, so it's just like working on select board stuff in this, like, it's just like a, basically like a subcommittee of sorts.
Yeah, and we had, um, that question was answered once previously, we had two select board members on the buildings and grounds committee, and that was acceptable, so.
Mm.
But you're not voting members, sorry.
We're not really voting on anything, to be quite frank, we're, what we're doing is we're developing, um, how we're gonna do this work, um, and so you know, she's gonna come, actually, Ma, do you mind just outlining it, you could probably speak way better than to this than I ever could.
Sure, ju- uh, to to which piece, I'm sorry, to the the process where we're at right now?
Yeah, like, what what we're, what is the work we're doing with Danielle, like, what?
Sure, so because this, we had initially begun this as a working group of the Creative Economy Committee,
Yeah.
that just for context, it it, we really did set it up that this was a group of folks who would do the deeper dive, that would do the research, um, who would provide recommendations, um, and work with Danielle, who is the point person from Arts Equity Group who we're working with, that contracted to project manage this, so there's, she's laid out a process with our collective input, um, we've been meeting weekly, um, for the last several weeks, um, and we have a a plan in place now for internal staff communications and engagement, public communications announcement engagement, um, working with leadership yourselves, uh, around decision making, getting additional layer of input from the Creative Economy Committee, when it was a working group of, but we're kind of re reshuffling that piece here. But there's a, a, um, a process in place and a lot of materials that are developing from the meeting formally, but decision making, um, as I understand it, would be, um, how beyond the that body, it's it's a, it it kind of functions more as a, as a working group in that way. Is that what you're looking for, Jen, I'm sorry?
Yeah, does that answer?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
You're not formally gonna be voting on anything, is what you're saying?
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that was my next question too, so, I mean, obviously, there are gonna be some big proposals made, will it go to the town to vote on the new town logo?
Yeah, so as part of the arts equity process, we're gonna have open forums for public input, um, so that's part of what she needs to be guided to who to talk to, like, how, who, what groups, how we're gonna set up like public meetings and all, like, she doesn't live here, she doesn't, you know what I mean? So that's like the work that the people who live here and the residents are gonna help, um, provide her, like, who are the different organizations to talk to, all of those pieces, the staff that she needs to speak with and all of that.
Right. But if I'm not mistaken, right, any of those big decisions come back before this board?
Yeah, absolutely, that's part of the process, yeah.
Right.
So feedback will be received, but ultimately, the final vote will be here.
Yeah, yeah. Cause she'll be hiring a designer and they'll come up with some concepts and, but the dis- final everything will happen here.
Got it.
So I feel like with the exception of Steve Lampere, you don't have a lot of deep roots on this member list.
Yeah, so he actually stepped down and Charlotte stepped down, so.
Am I missing one? Oh, did you have additional information?
Yeah, so, so we're looking for two, two different members for this, for this group.
Oh, I see, I had, don't have that one.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, is that gonna be your focus, is finding someone who's?
Yeah, no, we definitely wanna get a diverse population, we want, you know, we've identified that we need, we need certain demographics who live in town, like, not just new voices, we need all, you know, the people who have deep, deep roots who have lived here for many, many years, and we've actively been searching for those people. So upon Steve's recommendation, we found Steve, he agreed initially, but then, um, decided that he didn't have the capacity to do it. So we're actively looking for others who are, who would fit that, um, kind of criteria. So if you know anybody, I mean, for sure, you know, and I'm, I don't necessarily need to be, you know, part of it either, I mean, I'm not part of the committee membership, but, um, if anybody here wants to get involved, we just have to not have quorum.
And then, I know, we, how many projects have we come up with for Kate on our very first night? But, um, will this be something that we can reach out to the community and say, who wants to be involved in this, because it would be nice to have more racial and ethnic diversity as well?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm excited about the outcome of this, though, this would be great, yeah.
So.
What's the question on the table?
To form a committee.
Form a committee.
Form a com-.
Versus not form a committee?
Correct.
Or they keep doing their work and then they can't publicize everything, right, because they can't work in a Google document together.
We can po- well, we can publicize using Kate's expertise, which would put more of a burden on her, she could amplify if we could get it posted on the town clerk's, uh, list of agendas, um, which is the, um, we would need to be a committee to do so.
I mean, do you feel like you should be a formal committee?
I would like to be open and transparent with the work that is being happening and that folks can feel like they can log on, that the go-to meeting is listed there and they can log on and listen during their lunch hour if they so desire.
Would that also give you the ability to then post video recordings of meetings?
Yeah, and we've already been recording all of our, all of our meetings.
But at the moment, you can't post it.
We don't have an avenue, um, and so we had like talked about like Chris, cause Chris Martin is on this, um, has been part of this process
Right.
and he's like, we can link it on the website and we could just, so, you know, publicize it on our website. We just really wanna be above board with this, this is a very public project.
Yes, that seems fair.
Yeah.
You know.
And, you know, the follow-up on that, the, uh, the opportunity for criticism is is gonna be great with this, so I think it is appropriate to form a committee, um, and to post, just like any other committee, so that there is no question that this was a public process.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, so I move we create the branding Belchertown committee with the charge in front of you with a membership of at least five members. That will be appointed by our.
Would you like to have it with staggering terms, what would you like to do?
Well, so, oh, yeah, so the, the committee would be stood up until the end of the work, which would be at the end of June thirtieth, which is nice.
So a final report.
Final report, yeah.
So this says the committee will consist of five members, not at least five members.
We can change it, we can do whatever we want, I think, cause Stephen, the earlier today we were talking about, does it need to have an, um, I, I mean, you wanna keep it small, they're not voting, this is the other thing, so it's not like we, um.
Well, we can do at least five, no more than seven if you want, just a, okay, so I'll make that change at least.
Yeah.
But does that dilemma, but does that, um, reduce your access to a wider population?
So also remember, the intention and the process is to have public input, it's not, this is not the group that's gonna make decisions,
Yeah.
this is just a small group of folks who are gonna be helping her and guide her to get
Yeah. Okay.
to the open, the really big public piece of this.
Right.
If that makes any sense.
It does make sense. Um, one more question about the the motion with, um, the limit ending in June. If it is needed, more, if more time is needed, we can just revise it and extend later, cause I imagine just because the committee's done with its work, there's still gonna be rollout of branding and.
Right, the implementation, so the next piece of this, um, is the wayfinding and, um, the implementation, so Ma has
Mm-hmm.
uh, applied and received the M D I technical grant, that's another piece of this project, it will be continuing on, and in fact, she's looking at another grant um, to apply for more extensive implementation of all of this work, so it's not like, um, this is, again, this is just for the branding component piece of it,
Mm-hmm.
which will accumulate in, um, the hiring of a designer and having that designer create the branding, and then the rollout of all of those pieces will fall under a different, a different umbrella of it look, it'll look different, it won't look like this.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you wanna retract the motion, just gonna brand the clean one?
Oh, my god.
Yeah, the other thing I would suggest is we remove the name, we leave the categories, but we rem- remove the names, um, because people may drop off and we have to bring new people in.
I mean, did we wanna tie descriptions of like who these peo- where these people came from?
No, I think those should be guiding principles for Steve's appointment.
No, 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 I'm trying to think of what's to say as the motion, if not.
Let's withdraw the first one.
Okay, I withdraw the previous motion.
I think the emphasis was on the f- no, fewer than five, no more than seven. Was there anything else that we?
And it commu- um, it will dissolve at the submission of a final report.
At submission of, well.
I have seven members appointed by the town manager.
Okay. Okay.
With no arms, just, just the categories, right?
Those are your guiding principles for appointment.
I feel like you know how.
What?
Nothing, please, no one on here is, I mean, yes, people dual as residents on here, but, I mean, don't you want just a pure resident on here?
Yeah, somebody who's not already in the thick of it.
Yeah.
No, we absolutely do.
So we have small business owner, Belcher, Communications Committee Chair, Creative Economy, Member BCTV, Belcher Town Culture, Town Plan. So do you want two more bullets to say, or one bullet that says resident?
Yeah.
Just, just wait if somebody doesn't have background in this.
Yeah, and I think a couple, I think a couple just plain old residents.
You can have plain old residents.
Let's put plain old residents.
Some of those plain old residents might take exception to being called plain old residents.
I was a plain old resident.
So we'll just put resident, what was that?
Yes.
Resident at large, does that agree with us?
Yes.
Untapped resource, uncut gem.
Like that.
So, we're gonna add resident at large, so we should be able to find five that fit this description. How about if you say residents at large?
Well, I think that brings it to seven.
Um, well, it, yeah, we'll work that out, if we do it five to seven, 'cause we, you know, we're probably gonna be bringing people in and other people might be dropping off. So, okay, so for the changes to the document, I have at least five members, no more than seven, appointed by the town manager. Dissolve at the submission of final report, we're going to remove the names, we're gonna leave the categories, and we're gonna add to the categories residents at large.
So moved. Can I do that?
Eh, probably not.
I move that we create the Branding Belcher Town Committee, with the charge as written, with at least five and no more than seven members appointed by the town manager, with the following guiding, uh, structure as outlined here, including two resident at larges, and this committee will dissolve at the submission of the final report.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Uh, onto the town manager's report.
Great, um. Trying to move through real quickly, um, I endorsed warrants. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we've been interviewing, uh, grant manager finalist. I, um, was part of a, a final interview, and I believe we'll have an appointment very soon. Um, weekly I meet with the, uh, HR director, um, that happened, um. I attended a meeting with the school superintendent, um, and various athletic association members, um, to discuss the, uh, condition of the, um, fields and, uh, future use.
Steve, can I stop you right there for a split second? Uh, this has been an ongoing issue for over a decade. The, uh, I'm glad to see it finally, uh, reached you specifically. The, um, uh, I'm not a fan of adding midterm goals and objectives, but this one's been hanging out there for such a long time. Um, I hope, I hope you can find the time to develop some sort of strategy, 'cause we spent a lot of money on the entire area, and, uh, the field is actually quite embarrassing. And, uh, I know for a fact we can do better, uh, with a little bit of thought and, um, a little bit of thought and a little bit of energy, so. Um, anything you can do to help make that happen would be, uh, would be appreciated by the entire town, I'm guessing.
Yeah, absolutely, it's a, it's an important issue for me. Um, and not everything has to be on, on a list for me to take it seriously. Um, so I think some good things came out of this meeting, I think first and foremost, there's probably better awareness, um, of the, of the hurdles that we've been facing. Um, a lot of the field condition, um, has to do with, um, our, our water supply. Um, you know, we belong to the Belcher Town Water District, they have a limited amount of water that they can provide, and with the wild swings that we've had in the weather over the years, and thirty years of development in Belcher Town since their last well was developed, um, the Dago Well on Federal Street. You know, there's not always a lot of water to, to go around. Um, and we've been advocating for a well. Um, our rec director recently installed a well at the Chestano Community School football field, uh, just for that reason.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've made some good connections with this meeting, I've been talking to, uh, officials in Wilbraham. Um, and of course, my first question to them was, you know, what are you doing about your water source? And they have wells, so I think that's gonna be the first priority, is to figure out how to get a well in, so we can keep a consistent water source and keep those fields irrigated. Um, dealing with, uh, invasives, uh, crabgrass and broadleaf weeds, that's another thing we need to address, and there's only certain ways we can do that. So I, I think we had a great discussion, um, I think most people in the room understood that those were big issues that we need to address before we can improve the field conditions. Um, one thing, I'm glad you stopped me, because I think there was a little bit of confusion over a comment I made about overuse of the fields. Um, the clarification, which I attempted at the meeting, is that the use of the fields versus overuse of the fields is a function of the condition. It has nothing to do with whether it is thirty games or ten games. It's whether or not we can keep the fields in good condition for whatever is scheduled on them. So when we use the term overuse of the fields, it's because of the conditions that we have. If we can improve those conditions, we could use the fields more. So I don't want people to think that we're gonna exclude, um, any group from use of any town field, um, because of some arbitrary overuse term. It's based on what the conditions are, and sometimes those conditions are droughts. And if we have a severe drought and we're struggling to keep, 'cause not every field's gonna be irrigated. And if that's the case, then maybe those fields have to be rested. So we need to be, you know, working on those kinds of understandings, so people have a better, um, um, grasp for what we're dealing with as decision makers. So it was a great meeting, um, we are working to get another one set up, um, with a more targeted audience, um, the boosters, um, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll get that worked out, so.
Which budget is financially responsible for the high school field?
That's the school department.
School department.
Yep, so since, um, uh, we were on that subject, um, I did learn that the school department has submitted a request to the CPC committee for funds to rehab the, the football field. Um, we may look at adjusting that a little bit, because, um, that well is critical, and maybe we revise the application and, and focus on well in some rehab versus a full reconstruction. So, stay tuned, but, um, yes, it's a, it's a priority of mine, so it's on, it's on the unofficial goals and objectives list, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sports Haven Infrastructure Project, um, we had a, uh, another monthly update, we have one every month. Um, we advertised our bids on December eleventh, um, this is the second, um, round of bidding. We have a bid opening for January twenty-first, we gave it a little bit of extra time, um, due to the holidays, we didn't wanna, um, rush it, um, with the contractors, so we're hopeful that we're gonna come in under budget this time. We made some adjustments to the project. Um, I've been dealing with some employee issues with our HR director, so that's why that's on there twice, um, this, this is outside of our weekly meetings. Um, we had a State School Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, um, they're gonna be coming in soon with a revised charge. Um, it seems to be a, um, thing to do now for our committees, 'cause they're, they're starting to realize that maybe they need to make changes to their scopes for memberships. So in this case, one of the things they wanna change is the name of the committee, they wanna drop State School. Um, so I would expect that to come in soon, and they also wanna make some revisions to the membership, and they're, uh, they're areas of focus. I attended two presentations for e-permitting, um, that's a topic that I, I think surfaced a few years back and, and, um, I think because of COVID, it fell off the radar. Our fire chief and building inspector have recently, um, revisited that topic, they're looking to implement it. Um, so I attended an orientation, and I asked, um, well, two orientations, and I asked very specific questions about, um, licensing and registration, and those are separate modules. So we're gonna also be pursuing those as well. Um, so when we talk about permitting, we're talking about building permits, burning permits, those kinds of things, oil burner permits. Um, when we talk about licensing, it could be, uh, you know, maybe as involved as, um, um, you know, our liquor licenses, I don't know yet. Um, could be dog licensing, which we have an online system now, but this would be incorporated a little bit differently into our website. When we talk about registrations, it could be for, uh, youth sports, it could be for, you know, whatever events that we have that people need to register for. So they are different modules and different topics, um, so we're gonna start working through that. Uh, it's a bit of a long-term, short-term, long-term type project for us, but we're, we are making some progress there.
So did you say, um, the fire and the, um, building permits, they, uh, how did this, how did you find out about this e-permitting, um, presentation?
They reached out to a vendor through, you know, working with IT.
Right.
They were, they reached out to a vendor, and then when it came to my attention that they were doing this, I said, you know, great, so.
I would like to, um, I'd like to offer you, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but if everybody feels differently, please let me know. That's the type of thinking that is really important to the town, and I would like you to make sure you say thank you, uh, uh, to those two departments for turning ahead of the curve here, and, um, trying to make things easier for the residents. Um, I really appreciate it, does the board feel differently, can we send them a letter from the board? Thank you.
I'll take care of it, I appreciate that, um. So, yeah, I was pleased to see that, um, the one thing that it appears is consistent is all of these modules would be a unipay option for any payments received, and, so. Um, I'm hoping to get into that too.
Is there a cost for software?
Yeah, we're working through that now, so we gotta figure out, you know, um, oftentimes when you have an online registration or licensing, you get a convenience fee charged, that's, that's what that covers.
Oh, alright.
We're working on all of those things.
And we already have a view of those systems anyway, through the Recreation Department.
Yeah, right, yeah, this might, that, those are the things we, we still haven't. Right now, we're talking just permitting the other two modules.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't even begun discussing, um, but I think that if we implemented this, it would replace what Rec's gonna be using.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I attended the Creative Economy Committee meeting, um, that's a good group, they're, they're starting to, um, make some progress. And I've been working on the FY twenty-six budgets, I think, um, at this point, all of the budgets are in, we, we, well, there's a couple of stragglers, but they're minor budgets. Um, mine is one of them, because I'm waiting to get some feedback from our communications manager, so we can figure out, you know, what her needs are. Um, but I don't anticipate a, a, a big change there, so, um, the town accountant's putting things together, um, so we'll have some information, um, over the next few weeks. I am trying to get a joint meeting together, um, it's proving to be harder than I expected. Um, so today, uh, with Kate's help, we sent out a doodle poll, um, so if everybody can just make sure to respond back to that. Um, and the only reason I'm, I'm asking is because I know most of you have already submitted, um, separate emails saying what date you're not available and what date you are, but, um, that's a lot of information, and I don't wanna lose any of it, so if you could just fill out the poll and, and send it back, um, people are using it. And now that we have a good grasp on it, we'll probably use it more, um, so we'll, we'll go from there. The rec director has informed me that the updated survey should be available in the next few weeks, so I'm hoping that our first meeting in January, I'll have that on there, I did not have time today to get back to him. Um, he's working on the, uh, uh, another T-Mobile grant, um, this time for the pocket park over by the skate park.
Hey, real quick, is anybody interested in looking at that survey before it gets sent out?
Yeah, yeah, that's my, that's my plan, is to have a draft here, not, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the draft will be available for the board.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying, um, because I know that the last time there was a lot of questions, so we will have the draft, uh, ahead of the meeting, and then at the meeting, we can, we can work on some things. Um, and I also know that, um, Kyle and, and our DPW director, Linda Laduke, are working on a CPC grant for the Town Beach Parking and Air Meeting League Committee on the seventh, so I'm hopeful that it, that goes through. And Kyle is also attending a park grant workshop, he's gonna try to make another run at a park grant if there's something that, um, that looks like we'd be eligible for, so stay tuned on that.
Great.
Um, and that's it on my report, um, updates. Any questions on the report? Okay. Um, the EDIC land transfer, um, I know that the surveyors have been in there, um, working, um, I don't have an update beyond that. Um, I'm still working with Mass Development on six and eight Berkshire Ave. Tadjil tower removal, hopefully in the next, uh, month or two, that'll be after list, thank you very much. Um, the master plan update, um, all I have for you is that the hazardous management planning committee met on December eleventh.
Steve, real quick, real, real quick on that, the, um, we're, our next meeting will be in January. Um, I'd like to put on the board's radar that, um, if you have looked at the master plan, uh, we'll probably be talking about that quite a bit for the, for the balance of the season. So this would be a good time to get, uh, we'll probably tackle one or two every month until, until May.
Okay, so, um, I don't know, I know, um, Jen's involved in a couple of other efforts there, so I'll let her jump in on that. Um, the elevator, the contract has been awarded, um, last week we had a pre-construction meeting, um, so the vendor is working on ordering materials, um, I told him I wanted everything to be in place before they take the elevator out of service, 'cause I wanna minimize the amount of downtime on the elevator.
Right.
Um, and they were fine with, with that, huh? They seem to be very understanding of buildings with one elevator, so. Um, the job description review, that's, um, I don't have anything new there. The, uh, human services study, um, that is the, uh, um, review of our recreation senior services and veterans agent offerings. Um, we've been talking about this for a while now, that work was dependent upon a grant. I'm happy to report tonight that we received forty thousand dollars from the state for that work. Um, there's a letter in the packet, um, that's a, uh, um, a grant application that, um, Joanna applied for. Um, and it's the Community Compact Cabinet's Efficiency and Regionalization Grant.
It's in the mail.
So I am working on, um, the paperwork, and as soon as we get the funds, we're gonna get started on that. So, um, that's great work on her behalf.
Can you add Joanna, that, thank you, Linder?
Yes, please.
I anticipated that, yeah, I will.
So that's rec department, senior center, and veteran services?
That is correct. Yep.
And ju- and just for, just for people who may be, uh, watching this, the amount of grants from five years ago to today, it's, it's like night and day, so, um, good job instilling a culture of trying to find those grants, Steve. The, uh, I know it starts with a couple of department heads, but it seems like it's starting to branch out a little bit, which is phenomenal.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, one of the things I'm gonna be cautious of is when we hire a grant manager, that, um, the efforts that the departments are currently putting into grant writing is gonna continue. Um, this person's gonna be there to assist, to help manage with, um, the workflow, um, but look for new money. That's gonna be the priority, so, um, you know, but I, I, I agree with, with what you're saying, I think the department heads have responded very well, um, grant money is coming in, and that's, that's just a great thing, so. It, it's certainly helping. Fire engine two, the motor, we have a quote, um, right now for thirty-seven thousand dollars to repair that engine, um. So we're gonna take whatever we can out of the operating budget for the fire department and replenish it, um, as soon as we can reserve fund, um, monies, so right now there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that account for emergency repairs.
Do we still have a vehicle from Amers?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Do we have a backup if Amers needs that vehicle back?
No, we need to get this started right away, so, um, I talked to the chief today, and, um, he was gonna reach out in the morning to get it started. Um, next meeting, um. At this point, um, I don't have much of an update on that, that I haven't already mentioned, but one thing I do wanna mention, um, and we'll talk about this again, but we need to think about scheduling a legislative visit. Um, we try to do that every year. I did speak to, um, Representative Saunders, and he asked that we try to come up with two or three priority items. Um, one that's on his radar that he wanted to talk about in particular was the Route Nine Allen Road intersection. Um, one that's on his radar that he wanted to talk about in particular was the Route Nine L Road intersection. Um, and then he asked if there was any other priorities at the board we wanna talk about. Um, so if you can be thinking about that, um...
Chapter seventy funding?
Yeah, yeah, it's always a big one. So, you know, we'll, we'll talk again, but, um, you know, I just wanted to get that on your radar, especially for the, the new board members. Uh, we usually have our legislators come in and, um, at a, at a meeting, and we, we talk about, um, everything under the sun, so. But they would like to be prepared for, you know, some of the bigger questions. And I think... That was everything on my list.
Awesome. Any mail items anybody wants to talk about?
I have a question about number two. Mass Central Rail Trail.
I sent that to our DPW director and conservation director. Um, I need to follow up with them, I asked them to respond to it. And then I think there's some paperwork that I need to do too.
Great. Board member reports. Whitney.
Sure, um, so this past week, I attended the Family Center Committee. They, um, hosted a winter gear swap in Town Hall, which, um, Steve, they said thank you very much for your support and willingness to let them use the Town Hall space. Um, I have a quick, just some information, it was an incredibly successful event. It was over two days on the seventh and the eighth. They had, um, it was just town members who donated clothing for families and children, all, uh, winter-related. But they really put together a nice event, they had craft activities for children. The, um, MVP two committee attended and gave out free books to families. There was a local photographer hired to do family photos for families, they had ten families do the family photos. One family said it was their first family photo that they've ever had taken by a professional photographer. The Belcher Town PD kindly did car seat checks and assisted twelve families. And altogether, they had over ninety-nine people receive, um, supplies and clothing. They handed out thirty-eight COVID tests, and they just wanted to say thank you so much to the board and to the town. Their volunteers put in about forty hours of work, and, um, the families were really appreciative, so, wanted to share that. And then I also attended, um, through the, the schools, Mr. Gould is our music teacher at the lower levels, and he sponsors a trip to the Springfield Symphony. And so I think we had about a hundred Belcher Town residents at Springfield Symphony this weekend, and that was really nice to expose kids and families to symphonic music. And then I also met today with our Creative Economy Coordinator, Maude, and to learn more about her role, economic development, and then also on some of the work that's being done with, uh, Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, it's my turn.
It's your turn.
So, um, to piggyback on that last sentiment, um, on December sixth, I attended with Lisa Massard Pearson, uh, the Western Mass Economic Ecosystem Summit, that was in Hadley, which was a really great event. Um, I got to speak for a couple of minutes about Belcher Town and to a lot of folks all around, uh, the valley. Connected with a bunch of folks, um, including, uh, the Valley CDC ED was there. I met the Veterans Chamber President, who lives in Pine Valley Plantation here in town. Um, so Lisa and I have been, um, talking about, uh, some sort of a business-minded event of some sort, and potentially getting the CDCs that we fall under, which is the Quavoak Valley CDC. Um, and the Valley CDC doesn't actually cover us, but there's, again, we're always in that weird gray area, and I'm thinking that having a meeting with both of their EDs, um, might be, um, something we can do. And then also the same with the chambers, the Amherst Chamber and the Quavoak Chamber. Um, so stay tuned for some of that action, potentially in the future. Um, I did speak with, um, the woman from DLS who's doing the financial review on Friday. Um, last week, there was the Arts and Culture Webinar that was put on by the MMA with folks from the MCC and other folks from around the Commonwealth, and I sent it to everyone, and it is well worth watching, very worth watching, and I encourage everyone in this room to watch it and get a better understanding of the work, um, and how it affects economic development, um, in other communities, and how it's applicable to the work that, um, that, uh, we've been doing here in town. Um, and, uh, I don't have an update on the master plan, but that just reminded me that the end of the year is coming up, and we should probably figure out what is happening with our Facilities Plan section. Um, and we will be applying for more direct local technical assistance through PVPC. Um, that application is open and due in January, and Doug is actively looking at the application.
Nicole.
Um, December ninth, I attended the Creative Economy Committee meeting.
Nice.
December tenth, I attended school committee meeting. They did an in-depth, um, overview of MCAS scores, um, within each grade, and then they compared it to how the state is performing. Um, all in all, all of our grades are performing at about the state average, with the exception of grades six, eight, and ten, which are performing phenomenally well, way beyond state average. And that was due to just some changes in, in just teaching techniques, but the teachers in those grades all got together and just tried something new, and it's really worked out well for them. Um, December eleventh, I attended the Board of Health, uh, public hearing, um, the Nicotine Free Generation. Um, there were only a few residents, um, both here and online that actually spoke out either for or against. Um, it was mostly folks from outside of Belcher Town who kind of wanted to voice their opinion. Um, at the, uh, Channel Twenty-two News was here. Um, at the end, um, the board voted, uh, four zero one to approve nicotine free generation. And that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, any questions from the press? Hearing none, okay. Number eleven, please.
Oh, I move to enter into executive session, not to return to open session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, Subsection Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
Roll call, though. Nicole?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero at seven forty-seven.